All right, I would like to call to order the city council special, special meeting for Monday, May 2nd. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, and I invite everyone that is in the audience to say the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the second.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds, there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you, do you, has anyone heard from Councilwoman Canes?
I, no, I have not heard from Councilwoman Canes.
Okay.
I saw her earlier, she didn't say anything, so I would assume that she would still be attending, perhaps she's just.
Okay, I didn't know if we wanted to do a motion to excuse, that's why I was asking. Okay, so we'll just wait, so first thing up is a public comment for items that's on the agenda, so that's anything that is on the agenda, sorry. Hi. You see any? No hands on here. Just checking to see if there's anyone that wants to speak about anything that's on the agenda.
Oh, there's no one.
Alrighty, so let's just move right into the action request for consideration of approval, first up is approval for Plant Moran letter of engagement. Yeah, that's you. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, I've asked for an engagement letter with Plant Moran to help me with some of the day-to-day operations also to help with, they can't help with the budget at all because they audit us and that, but they can help with some of the auditing things that we do, and they can also help with the day-to-day operations, I am going to be going out um for a procedure that might take two weeks to two months. They haven't given me any timeframe length yet, so I just want to let everybody know.
So you're, I mean.
So it will be a medical thing, and so I would like to get help and get the budget done, or me work on the budget and have them help me with some other stuff so that when I do go out, but I also plan on still, if I am out being on Zoom calls when it does come to budget meetings and things like that to go over things, so I will be doing that if I can.
I personally think if you're going to be on a medical leave, that you're on a medical leave.
But, yeah, somebody's got to explain some of the budget stuff.
You know what, that's what the situation that we're in at this point, and if you're on a medical leave, you need to be on a medical leave, that's the right thing to do and take care of yourself because that's the most important.
But that's why I'm engaged with them, so, because we do not have anybody at this time under, for the accounting position, we are putting it out, we've, I've had to change up a few things on it, and so we're going to put it out there again to see if we can get anybody in to work under me for that.
Okay.
So, thank you, yep.
So, so since you'll be on medical leave, the, I was looking through the, the contract, and it says where it should be noted that at no time during the engagement, it's on page four.
Do you want to make a motion first, or do you want to discuss first? No, I mean, you can do it however you want to, but I'm just asking, do you want to make that motion?
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Plant Moran, Plant and Moran, for help with the listed scope of services in their agreements.
It's been moved to second, now, go ahead.
So, since you're going to be on leave, uh, so who would, you know, necessarily step up because it says no time, uh, will they be able to engage with responsibilities of making investment decisions, signing checks, making bank transfers, initiating ACH or wire transfers, or handling cash in any way, so how does that work?
Scott and Suzie are both on the bank account, they can both sign checks, um, they can do wire transfers, um, they have the key fobs that one can do a wire transfer, the other one. So, and there is things like, um, today we just rolled over our tax system, so I have to get the tax system up and running, they have not given me a date of when I will start being off or when the procedure will be done, so, I, they said I could know maybe the day before.
And, I know we talk a lot, so. Also, you're the only one who knows how to do payroll, how does that work?
I am the only one that knows how to do payroll, um, I had said that people can fax or email me the information, I can stick it in it, because ADP does the payroll, it's just putting in the information, so, and I am the only one on the payroll system. So, that's not that difficult.
And how many?
And I know what you're saying, Ms. K, Ms. Mayor, but that is something that, you know, the employees will want to be paid, I know, so.
My.
Yeah.
Um, and, and do you have any estimate as to how many hours a week you think they'll, will need from Plant Moran?
No, I don't.
Just.
It's, it's going to be probably bank recs, um, just things like that, the common, you know, monthly stuff that gets done, things like that, that they can work on, there's some things that are not going to be.
Right, so they can't.
So, I know in the past we had some issues with like, how much we were willing to pay for a contract, is there like a cap or set amount of money we're willing to spend?
I haven't even thought about that at this point, um, but I wanted to bring it to you just in case it was over the 5,000, I'm hoping that it wouldn't be, but I don't know, because there, if you look at their rates, their rates are a little high.
Yeah, that's why I, I was curious, and I didn't know how long we would, you know.
Yeah, but since they have done work for us in the past, and the person that would be helping me, I have worked with her in the past, and she is pretty good about doing these things pretty quickly because she knows what we've done in the past, so.
Right, but she says.
Because I would be working with the same person.
She's separate from the audit staff though, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, she's on a whole different, they have a professional team, and then they have the audit team, so the professionals can help with different things like bank recs, things like that, they cannot help with the budget, they cannot help with anything that, um, the auditors will be auditing as per se.
Yeah.
But they can work on fixed assets, they can work on the OPEB, the MERS calculations, things like that.
Yeah, it'll, it'll definitely get over $5,000.
Will they be able to present to us like as we're, as we're using them, of how much, you know, we're spending, like?
I think, I think they can give us, I mean, because they're going to give us monthly bills, so I would be able to get that information, I can ask, um, if they have an idea when they're working on things, also, um, I was going to say, no, I lost my thought, I have been trying to work a lot of weekends, my nights, um, trying to get caught up on things so that it's not going to be a mess.
Okay, maybe to, given, you know, we meet every two weeks, maybe they could, they can coordinate, providing us their hours, like every two weeks, that way we, we're constantly abreast of, of how many hours we're, we're using.
I can do that. Captain, do that.
So will they, do we plan on having them attend council meetings, or no?
Not really, I mean, uh, I would show them how to do the budget, or to do the, um, council reports that I do, or I can even show somebody, I could probably even show Glenna so we can go through step by step on what reports I need to have done for council, and maybe she could do that for us.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to play, pay Plant Moran to do council reports, I think Glenna's would be able to do that.
Okay.
Would this be a good idea, also to think about getting a temporary, um, temporary person in place too?
We've tried to get temporary accountants in place, and it has not worked for us.
I'm saying to help Glenna also.
Oh, um, it might be, but at this time, I want to see how far I can get before.
So, I, I mean, I will say, and I've said it to you since we've had this conversation offline, um, that I am totally against you being on a medical and working, I mean, I know what's going on, and I know the best way to heal is to heal and not worry about trying to work, that's why medical leave is put in place, so you are off, so you can heal, and so I, you know, this is just.
I mean, I can try to show people how to do payroll, they'd have to go under my name and everything, my.
Is this, we have to do better, we have to figure something else out, and.
That's why I was hoping to get somebody underneath me, because Erin used to do payroll, Erin used to do a lot of the things that I am still doing right now, because I, we haven't had that person, so.
Again, just express, I don't think that that is, um, I just don't think that that would be.
So what is?
The wrong thing to do, to be on a medical leave and have to work still.
So what is it possible for you to train someone now to do payroll, like and report and let us know that you did do that, so, you know?
I can try, yeah.
Let's see, the only thing is that also, they have to log in under Pam's name, and that's another issue.
Yep.
Um, with security in that regard.
And then it's also. And then it's also a problem too, is with their, um, with personnel's information and things like that, because I am the human resource person, so, now if we had a manager, it might be a little different, because manager could be doing that.
Well, hopefully we can, you need a second person, so.
I don't know that for a while.
I don't mean to be so blunt, but, like, we need to make this.
Thank you, Jaylen.
Yeah, but she, she gave me a lot.
I'm sorry, you, yes, we, yes, we need to have a.
Looking forward to a plan for, for you to have help.
Do the best plan I can.
Well, and like Pam mentioned, we are going to be posting, we are going to be posting for these positions, we're, we're doing it, it does our, my goal is that we do that.
Is that going to come under your, your city administrator?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll save it for right there.
Thank you.
All right, any other, um, good?
Um, I have, was looking on the website, I think last week for the 2020, 2020 audit, and there isn't anything there. Where, where is that audit, were there things that corrected for me that? There are weaknesses and deficiency.
The 2021 audit, um, I'm not sure if it made it, I know it's, um, at the state with the website, but I'll have to check the city, because I don't know if it ever made it to the city.
I know it, it is.
Because I don't post on the city website at all, so.
Who puts it on there?
Usually the manager does, but I can ask Suzie if she'll put it out there for us.
Okay, because last time it was, it was dated September 24th, 2020, that was, it was done in September 20.
Well, this one wasn't done until November this last year, it was late.
Okay.
It was done really late, because we had two of our audit team had left, and we got two new audit members, so there was a kind of a changeover there.
Okay, can I get a copy of, of that, of the audit?
2021?
Yeah, or 2020, yeah, 2020, 2021, yes, thank you, you mean 1920, 2021, or 2020?
1920 is on the website, okay, 2021 is back.
Okay, so may I ask, is that, I mean, is this what the agreement for the professional services for the, what we have on the floor at the motion right now, is this regards to that?
Well, it's all related.
No, no, this is, this is really just to do the agreement, to put that in place, so.
Okay, but I wanted to know what happened to the audit.
Can you help me with this one?
That we had.
We have a motion on the floor about the agreement, the professional agreement right now.
This is just discussion that she's, Karen was just asking for a copy of something else that's not really related, per se, was just part of the discussion, but it's not part of the motion.
No, and it, it isn't part of the motion, but before I approve another expenditure, I would like to know what happened to our previous expenditure with Plant and Moran with audits. So, but it is, it kind of is connected.
Okay, this was asking. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, next up is the approval for the elevator maintenance expenditure. Hey, I like that, go ahead.
Yes.
Before we move on, may I just point out, um, and I'm not sure if all council members are aware that the draft budget resolution would be due under the charter timeframe, um, at May, on May 16th. So, and then as well as the public hearing by that date for approval by, uh, June 20th, on June 20th, is the date to be.
I love me and be the bearer of bad news on that.
They didn't know if he was going to be here.
Yeah, typically the sixth, the meeting before we push everything back 30 days this year, but the meeting before, uh, council should receive the draft budget for the pass of this scheduling public hearing, which this year in public hearing will take place on June 20th, so, just wanted to remind everyone of that.
And then, um, damn, you don't know when you're going to be going out either, right? So.
But I will work extra hard on the budget.
He said approval was by June 2nd, right?
June 20th.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, um, we continue to work in this elevator, uh, recently, May 12th, excuse me, April 12th, we had a state of Michigan inspector come in and evaluate the elevator, we were cited for two separate violations, one being the delamination of the cabin walls in the elevator, which you have a quote from Cone for, the other thing, the, the other violation was for a discharge pipe that's running from the pit to a drain located in the elevator room, but it's running on top of the cement floor, which is cited as a trip, trip hazard, uh, we had Nelson Brothers out to look at it, I'm still waiting for a written quote from them, that's why it's not in the packet today. So the first, um, item is the delamination of the walls that cost is $17,873. The second quote you have is in talk with the state of Michigan inspector, and telling him what we're doing and the upgrades we're making to our, our generator, he informed me that we would have to do some additional work on the elevator, bring it up to speed to run on emergency power, so if we plan on running that generator, excuse me, running the elevator off the generator, which we can do, the generator is powerful enough, we're going to have to make a number of upgrades to the circuitry and the wiring and the control board, and that cost is $30,577.
17,001 is the one that, um, you have to do, right?
Yes.
And the 30,001 is based off of the, getting the generator in place.
Yes, the, the issue we're going to have is that, once the generator's up and running, and it's running the city, if we have a power outage, we're not going to be shutting down City Hall, we need that elevator be running and operable. So, it, it's an elective thing for right now, but obviously, once that generator's installed, we're going to have to make these improvements.
And when is the, um, installation for the generator, do we get that far?
Not that far, we just had, uh, Consumers Energy was out and just ran a new three-inch line, we have the meter and everything stuck installed outside, and they're slowly, uh, doing work, waiting for the generator, we don't know when it's going to arrive yet.
So today is the 17,000 have to.
Correct.
30 can be put on hold.
Yep, and like I said, I'll bring you the quote for Nelson Brothers when, when I get that.
Okay.
It, it can be put on hold, but it, once the generator's in, we have to do it, because otherwise it would be ADA.
Correct, and, and again, the longer we wait, the more, the more expensive it's going to get, so.
Yeah.
Did they give you a timeline of when the 17,000 has to be complete, complete?
No, there's not a timeline, as long as I've been in contact with the inspector, let him know that we have, Cone is doing work, that they've been out, we've got an estimate, so, um, as long as I stay in contact with him and let him know that we are working on it, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
And Cone is really the only, is it the only elevator company that can do this, or?
It is not, um, but we, as you know, we did, we got three bids prior for the $20,000 worth of upgrades, and we chose Cone, Cone does our monthly inspections and testing on the elevator, so it just seems to make sense that we just stay with this company.
Okay, and this is on top of what we've already approved.
Correct.
So now it's going to be another 50?
Yep. Sorry, yes.
It's a three-story building, if we don't have power, we could walk up a couple flights of stairs in the building. Who's even going to be here if there's no power?
Building's open, and we have to have ADA compliant, SS ADA compliant.
We don't have an ADA compliant bathroom, did he go in there?
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do. In the basement.
In the basement.
This building is backwards. And I think we could do better on the interior of the elevator, that's not anything.
That, isn't that?
That seems a lot.
Doesn't that help with the 17, the replacement of the walls, right?
Walls are the 17, the wall panels, it's very specific, um, very specific material, and it's, everything is, is guided by the state of Michigan, so when, when they saw cut the floor to reroute that pipe, we are going to have to have a representative from the elevator company to stand by while the plumber is in that generator or, uh, control room for the elevator, so it's very, very specific on what, what we're asking them to do.
Do they show you samples of all this stuff that you're?
Samples of the.
Of the custom fabricate, fabricated Wilson Art laminate, do we know what it looks like, it's got to be stainless steel, there's no other option?
I have not.
Stainless steel's like one of the most expensive.
State of Michigan, right?
Yeah, this is, I mean, they.
Just want to make sure.
I sent the violation notice to Cone, so they knew exactly what we were speaking about, and this is the estimate that they sent me.
Um, before we go any further, can someone make a, um, a motion, uh, for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the elevator maintenance expenditure.
Second.
It's been moved to second, um, and yes, there's going to be some more discussion, should this, um, motion be separate though, because we want to do the 17, are we making a motion for all of it?
Oh, my motion was for all of that, but.
Yeah, look, we should change the motion, right?
I'm thinking that it should be changed only because this is a have to, and this is a, once we get the generator, or once we know when the generator even is going to be installed.
Well, again, it's, we don't know when it's going to be installed, we don't know when it's going to come in, but it's going to take time for these, for the elevator company to get these parts as well.
Okay.
So it'd be, it'd be my suggestion that we vote on both of them and get the ball rolling, uh, because we don't know how long it's going to take to get all the wiring and the control panels and things like that.
Well, given the waste.
And then.
Prices and inflation is. Lock it in now versus.
Okay, well, I mean, is there any further discussion regarding this?
Seems to me we should get another estimate, but it just seems high.
Well, they're, they'll probably be the, the lowest bid.
Well, they might be, but they might not.
Then they're already going to work.
Which might be why they're giving us a higher price, they think they've got the job locked in.
Do you know how long it would take for you to get another couple of, um?
I always try the issues getting them to come out, since we didn't select those two companies in the previous 20,000, I'm not sure how willing, they're going to be willing to come out here and do that. Now, I also talked to Cone because we had, just had a, uh, an annual inspection or testing of the elevator, which was right around $1,000, and because we are doing all this work and getting quotes, they knocked off a couple hundred dollars for the, for the testing, it's an annual test that has to be done, so, whatever the council would like me to do, I can do.
We have 50,000 laying around to do a project like this, or is this coming from grant money, or what money are we pulling this from?
I believe we'd be using the ARP funds if, if they're available.
As we discussed, I think that was second, um, we did, uh, mayor call, we presented several ideas, council decided to use the funds for the generator, uh, the door lock system, and, and the elevator, and this was, we weren't thinking the elevator was, uh, going to be this media of a cost, uh, but we have not, or council has not allocated our full amount of ARP dollars at this point, so this would be a wise continuation of those funds, I believe.
Any other discussion, um, before we take, I mean, it's, I guess I'm just trying to hammer it home that the 17,000 portion is, we have no choice, opposed to going to another company to get, um, to get quotes, but actually both of them, we really have no choice, but the 17,000 is the one that is being mandated from the state of Michigan to become, to have, to be up to code.
Can we see a copy of that, what they mandated for us, is that something we could also send to a couple other companies that might be able to? They wouldn't have to come out, they could just see what the job is, and give us a quote.
Well, we can, the, again, the, the panels are actually plastic laminate, for Wilson Art, plastic laminate wall panels with a brushed steel reveal, which would be around the seams, so it's, it's, it's from our standard color selection supplied, and we're going to re, maintain the ceiling and the floor, or just doing the floor walls, so.
That's five grand a wall.
And is there a timeline from the state of Michigan's, um, request?
No, as long, again, as long as we stay in contact with them, let them know that, we've got a contract, you know, if, again, once we sign this, or something to that extent, that we can ship to them, I love to know that we've got a contract. So last time our elevator was actually inspected by the state of Michigan was 2019, so.
And we were fine, just two years ago, we have barely used it, because it's, we've been on lockdown.
And new inspector.
Yeah, there's a bunch of new inspectors, the state of Michigan.
So, since there's not an actual timeline, could we possibly hold this, this discussion off until we're ready to move on, like the generator piece, or?
I can't answer that, I'm not sure when you'd want to talk about the generator piece, so.
Generators in play.
Yeah, generators in play.
Right, but I'm saying when, whenever you're ready to actually do the work to make sure the generator or the elevator runs, can we have, bring this discussion back up?
Well, again, just like Consumers Energy's already done their part here, I, I think it really needs to be a step-by-step process.
Okay.
And waiting is, is going to do nothing but drive the cost up, and delay, and delay any type of, uh, any type of cohesiveness with getting the generator, make sure everything's up and running, uh, ready to go.
Well, I do know elevator requirements are very, very strict and very, I mean, I don't know why, because most other things in the state are not, that they are, and there's only a couple companies that even do the work.
Correct.
Very, very strict standards and requirements, so I don't, you know, I don't know, um, that's always a good idea to get additional quotes, but, um, said it's such a very specific, uh, specific requirements and all of that, that, you know, I don't know.
Which begs the question, how much is a new elevator, sometimes you're just catching something, you gotta.
$250,000, and that's like a cheap one, unfortunately.
For the one you need here, that's only going to three levels.
I don't know if that's how much the, I, I just know that it can be elevators, at their minimum 250,000, and probably closer to.
Just curious, I've never shopped an elevator, but I didn't.
You know, I, I know sometimes we, sometimes we.
Or can we find one on Marketplace? I don't know, I just, sometimes we piecemeal things, and you end up getting a new elevator in the end anyway, I mean, how bad is it that maybe it's time to look for what you really need?
We need a new building.
Oh, yeah, that's true, and then again, that begs the question, if we need a new building, why are we spending 50,000 on an elevator? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, didn't you give us a roof that needs to be done too, or did you get that done, who talked about the leak in the roof? I mean.
Yeah.
They're doing that, okay.
We actually, there's several facility upgrades.
Yeah. We probably should get that list and prioritize them, you know, see what the, what we have to spend on all of this stuff.
Well, that's what the planning commission does, the capital improvement plan.
But it's also, this situation. But it's also, this situation is a little different, because again, it was the state of Michigan that came out and inspected it and put this, pushed it up our priority list, so. And hence the reason, I know it wasn't a popular decision, but that's why I was saying, you know, the have to compared to, you know, what's coming down the pipe. Maybe you've been separating out, is it better to eat the elephant small bites or just the whole thing? But.
And I agree with you, Kelly. Also, I'm wondering, so we can just stay on one accord, maybe we could ask the other two to come out and see what their price will be, and then come back during, if you can get them here within the next few weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. To see like, if they could come up with a, with a big quote, and then we can possibly make the decision, see the quotes, make the decision on who we want to be the contractor, and then do we want to do just the seventeen thousand first and then move on to thirty thousand? Or do we wanna do both because we got a better price?
I can make the inquiries. I think these quotes are only good for thirty days, so.
That's meaning to, I mean, not trying to really put extra on your plate, but you know, just to have somebody come out and buy the next house.
I can make the inquiries.
Okay.
So I think that this needs to be tabled then. Right, or you need? Yeah. Okay. Okay, if there's not any more discussion, then we can do roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Kenez?
To approve this? No.
Councilmember Miller?
No, we're delaying, right?
Yeah.
Mayor Garrett?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
No.
Most denied.
So we'll just put it back in our packet for.
Two weeks. Do we have to go to table it, or?
No. So next up is the proclamation for the Mental Health Awareness Month. May is Mental Health Awareness. But I don't seem to have a proclamation in the packet.
Very.
Thank you. I stopped at fourteen. Not, not calling anyone out. Anyway, um, the, anyways, May is designated as Mental Health Awareness Month. And it was from the Oakland County Community Health Network that asked that Lathrow Village recognizes May as Mental Health Awareness Month. The one thing that I found very interesting, especially with COVID that has happened, is that it's more of our younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, essential workers and adult caregivers have disproportionately have worse mental health outcomes, and increase in substance abuse, and an elevated suicidal ideation association with COVID. What really got me, because I also did a, I was invited to Phil's Zone yesterday to talk about from the Southfield Lathrow Optimist Club to discuss mental health. Is that one in six US children ages two to eight years old have been diagnosed with mental behavioral and developmental disorder. And so May sixth is designated the National Children's Month, excuse me, National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And May second through May eighth is designated as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. Oakland County Mental Health Network is committed to being a zero suicide organization and cultivate and network for providers who are engaged in the zero suicide philosophies. Um. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael, excuse me, Mayor Michael Garrett and members of the Lathrow City Council do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-two as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Lathrow Village, and calls upon our citizens, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our city and state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery. I think that this is really important that we all recognize this as, you know, I'm glad that we're recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month. I think we need to recognize it all year round, because I, I believe more people suffer than they think they do. And as I've always told people, and I'm very transparent about it, is that I lost my nephew to suicide in twenty fourteen. And I will never stop talking about that, because it is very important to understand it was from depression, you know, and not feeling like you measure up. And that is something that just, it's, it's a terrible situation, also from like, oh my goodness, can't think of her name now, from the juds just yesterday, of watching that and understanding what happened with that is very, it's too bad. And it's, it's really, it saddens me that people think that there's, there are not enough, or there's no one out there to support them. So it's very important that we, as a community, I feel that we support it. So I don't know if we have to vote on accepting the proclamation, or just it just happens.
So.
Thank you. So.
If I may, just to follow along with this, I actually had a conversation with what Mark Watson, Voice 20 Foundation, and he is, he's gonna be working on a Mental Health Awareness Day. I just asked the DDA to partner. Literally just talked to him like an hour before the meeting, so we're working two hours, hoping to have something on May twenty fifth. Some more details to follow, but felt appropriate to go for that conversation.
For sure, because also, it was averaged, when I did some research on suicides, between the ages of twelve to twenty-five, that that's the age for boys to consider suicide on a Thursday night. Is that not the weirdest thing?
Well, and it's good that we're doing it on.
Is there a way to put some stuff up on the website, perhaps, some links to organizations that can help?
Sure.
I mean, if we're gonna be part of this, we should absolutely take charge.
Awesome idea.
And it doesn't have any links.
I will.
I will.
I sure will.
I can post them on the city's Facebook page, too.
I, if you follow Tom Watkins, who used to be the Chair or CEO of Detroit Wayne Mental Health. I can't remember the name of it, Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority, I think that's it. He has a lot of information, too. It's on LinkedIn, I believe. If you look up his name, he has a bunch of things underneath that. And I can't remember the other ones. Kevin, I think Kevin's song, but I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Next up is the Traffic Island Right-of-Way Maintenance Discussion. Ooh, yes.
So you may recall, it's your, I think it was at your last meeting. I think it was that councilwoman has brought up the Butterfly Garden and the maintenance, or was it you?
Nope, it was a councilwoman.
We all had a different, we all had a different garden that we thought needed help.
Well, so we did discuss it at the last meeting, and how do we?
The right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Finding your right-of-way, so I wanted to include this. Do that discussion. Videos I can try and play for you. That would be helpful, so let me go into the, that case.
Did she take videos of the islands?
I did.
Oh, you did? Yeah, I was gonna say, I drove around and looked at all of them, too.
So I tried to, tried to drive as slow as I could without messing up on traffic. Get as much of it.
He used his camera while driving.
You didn't hear that. Five miles an hour, Scott.
No, that's him. Moving vehicle.
You weren't driving, you had someone else driving.
Exactly.
Ignore the, ignore the side view mirror. I was reaching around him, the driver.
That first one is the one that somebody posted on Click Fix, Blackstone? Is that correct?
So there were three of them, when we, I can't see the name of the one she's doing right now.
Blackstone.
Yeah, so this is Blackstone. So this one, this one was in the best condition. Of them all. I mean, this, this one doesn't look like it'd be too difficult to clean up, but.
That's one I understand residents are taking care of.
Yeah, they are, yeah, for the most part.
And also, still, nothing has really bloomed yet, so I can really know what you're.
Yeah, if you, if you go there in person, you can tell, you can see that there's a lot, and not in this one, but in the other one, there's a lot of dead trees. A lot of the trees that have fallen over or have fallen over, and then a lot of invasive, invasive species coming up as, as trees today.
And it starts blocking the view of the driver.
Yeah. These are structures. Yeah.
Which one is this one?
This is Eldorado.
Oh, yeah, that one's bad.
Over by Para, and there are a lot of dead trees in that one.
And garbage.
And garbage, yeah.
When did you take these?
This weekend.
All right, so by this coming weekend, we'll see green and we'll be able to.
Yeah, like I said, when you're, when you're there in person, you can see, you can see what's bad and what's not, and there's a lot of dead stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see, you see all the trees broken off on the side.
That one, at least, it's away from the road, so you can, when you're driving, it's not so bad.
Take the words for laughs.
Yeah. Have you ever seen these?
That's, that's all that stuff right there.
Has the city started mowing yet? Thank you.
At least on the first two, there's a lot, there's quite a setback, but like you said, on the third one, this one coming up, there's no.
Yeah, you, that's an accident waiting to happen. People are merging.
This one's outside.
This is Red River.
This is the one that's outside of the House in the Woods property.
Yeah.
And someone, someone dumped a Christmas tree in there when I was driving around there at one point.
All that thin stuff at the beginning is all invasive.
Did someone take the limb down, the tree limb that fell? Is that gone?
I didn't notice.
Oh, it's, somebody took it then.
And that's all invasive right there. I don't think, I don't think they were, really, it really looked like a lot of invasive stuff that's just been left to go for a long time, and it's starting to grow into trees, because it's so large. There's a lot of stuff about this thick.
Boxard?
Pretty.
Yeah, some of it is.
Yeah.
So those are the three, I suppose the bigger ones. I know it's not necessarily all of them. The last one, that's the piece that's right across from House in the Woods. That's where the Butterfly Garden is. The other one is.
Panera.
The one over in that corner. That one, and you could see in that one, it's really, really waterlogged.
Which one?
The one over here.
Behind Panera?
It's not behind Panera, it's actually.
Oh, the Blackstone one?
Not, well, I guess Blackstones. Up there.
Well, there's Eldorado.
Yeah.
Panera, which is near Panera. It's kind of near.
I wouldn't call it five, but yes, that's the one. So that one, that one is very similar, actually, to the triangular lot that's behind.
The church.
The church.
Which is wet.
And they're both very, very wet. At all times, really. I don't think I've really ever seen, I've tried to go trotting around in there. Probably should wear better shoes when I go do it, but, um, it's just wet. It's, that is, that's actually a developable piece of property. That could be.
Eldorado?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, you could probably get a home on there. Single-family home, or do some sort of very small duplex, triplex type of deal. But, so. Right now, I believe it's GTW that maintains the, the most.
Grass.
The area, but.
Nothing else.
Beyond that, there's nothing else.
I know that in years past, they have started, when they start mowing these triangle lots, they do go start picking up the trash around them, too. Because that has been something we have asked for that to be done, because we have had complaints on the trash before, so.
So I mean, there's gotta be companies that specialize in maintaining this kind of stuff, I would think. I mean, is there somebody we can get out to give us an estimate of what they think we should do for those, those three properties?
Well, I guess, what kind of, I mean, are you looking to see them cleared entirely, so they're just?
No.
Far, so they're just all grassy, I guess. What kind of maintenance are you looking to do? And are you looking to differentiate the maintenance on the Eldorado and the Blackstone one, and do something different with the, the one across from House in the Woods? I mean.
The Dorothy Warren Park, they turned into a little park. It's got grass, it's got a bench, it's got a little garden, and it kept the nice trees. I would like to see those duplicated. Keeps the trees.
Okay.
Keep some privacy. I saw the letter from the gal that lives.
Yeah.
Blackstone. It looks like she doesn't want it cleared, but I think we could make it tidier, at least.
Okay.
Pleasant to, to look at.
And so they maintain, maintain it as well, the neighbors over there.
Yeah. The Blackstone one looks like it just needs a little bit of TLC.
Yeah, and it'll be fine.
Considerate of that. We should be considerate of what the residents.
Oh, yes, the people who are around it, absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, the other two, I mean, like the Red River one, you know, you're right. I mean, it could be another park or something like that. You know, and the Eldorado one, I mean, we could clean it up. We could, I mean, you know, you said you could get a couple houses on there. I mean, I don't really have a preference, but I don't even think, or I have to think about it more, I should say, but, but I think we've got options with that one, but that one's pretty thick and deep.
Well, I would think we'd wanna have, I mean, just council as a whole would wanna have a more more firm idea of which direction, like, do we wanna just make them parks, or we, instead of, before we start contacting companies to come and do something to, when we don't know exactly what we want them to do.
And I think putting it out first. No, and I think the discussion has started, and maybe we have residents that would have a say or, or in the landscaping business.
And wrecking.
Yeah, we discussed it, Recreation Advisory.
Yes, beautification, recreation.
Committee. Let's.
The tree committee.
The tree committee, they're anxious to do some things. We don't want it cleared out like eleven mile in Santa Barbara, like, we don't, we don't want that.
I think, yeah, you still want screening and privacy, but to look nice, not just all disheveled. Those have gotten me on. So. Oh, yeah, I think.
They're talking about building, like, do they meet our building requirements? Are they the right size? Or is there utilities there? Like, what, what is involved with opening that up to build it, you know? I think step one is that you take it to the recreational advisory committee, or the tree committee, take it there, come up with ideas there, bring it back, let's talk about it.
Just a thought. You know, if you, if you were to go route of a community, like cleanup day, or cleanup, if you did something on those parks, I could mention the idea next time in the forty-sixth district court, the parolee's department. I could mention the idea next time, in the 46th District Court, the Pro H Department's generally looking for. Land service programs, so it would definitely be something that would be supervised, but that would be a good way for individuals that are in need of giving back to the community. Just a cleanup program, maybe start with that.
I do have a cleanup plan for, uh, first Saturday in June.
Except that's something that I can reach out to them and see if that's something that you need people to. Volunteer, volunteers.
That's, that's a good idea. Thank you. And, um, just to mention, but I know that we have, and it was at somewhere else that we were doing the Butterfly Garden, which is on Surrack Wood, right? But I did, I had a challenge, a mayor's challenge from Troy. State rep, and it was to have a, to, what was it again, the proclamation?
The monarch.
Save the monarchs and pollinators.
Yep, save the monarchs and pollinators.
And so, uh, I agreed to it. So, um, either to keep doing Surrack Wood, or what I was thinking again, was the property outside of, uh, the House in the Woods. I don't know what that takes, I don't know what that looks like, but. That would be.
I still am thinking, I think, to put together some kits, too, like.
Oh, yeah.
Thing kits, um, and I'll be talking with the community. The community garden folks, um, trying to speak about what they're doing over there and their needs, um, right now anyways, so, I was planning bringing up to them. For that, but those, maybe like. I know butterflies, like, I know monarchs, like milkweed, so I'm, maybe, maybe one of those triangular lots, you know, we end up with like a big milkweed field. I don't, I don't know what that takes either, but.
Maybe that is milkweed, I don't know what's in that.
It does look pretty when it's in bloom. Um, I mean, nothing looks really terribly attractive right now, right? So, um, maybe we could certainly add to it.
So, any other discussion around that? Moving on to city administrator update.
Oh.
We did it.
A good chunk of it, so. About Pam going on her, on her leave, we are working really hard to make sure that those job descriptions for our open positions are nice and tight and they've got. They, they say what we want them to say and have the job functions in them, like to get them out, posted this week, uh. On the proper places. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a specific. Financial websites that we, we want to. Post on for Deputy Treasurer, account to whatever we're gonna call it, so, I'm looking at.
You guys post on Indeed or no?
Um, we did for, we did for the. Administrative Assistant Position. Imagine we can post it for. The accountant, Deputy Treasurer. Did the new person start? New person could start, she's here, she was here today, so, learning and. Just trying to absorb a ton of information, so. And when is the trip? The trip is, uh, May 16th through 18th, 19th, something like that.
Is there any, uh, anymore on the clerk, I know that I think last time you said that there was a little bit of potential traction with the first candidate, I can't remember her name.
No, I spoke with her, and right now, she's. Can take on another, another responsibility at her current, uh, job, so. We can revisit that, if it's still open in a couple months.
She said after, after the, after the budget.
Budget.
Period.
Yeah.
But hopefully.
Started to reach out to. Regarding the elections specialist, um, so, I, I don't know if we've, uh, if there's any updates on that, just yet, but we have reached out to a girl that was here last year, just we should.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay. Okay. Was there anything else for us, any city administrators?
We, we are going to start the repairs on the bathroom in the basement on Wednesday.
Okay.
So, moving along.
Any, any update on the mold?
I'm sorry?
Any update on the mold, mold issue?
It's all been remediated and, uh, repairs will begin on Wednesday.
Great, great.
Suzie, did we figure out what that drip was that she saw when she went down there?
Yes, thankfully, they were just 12-year-old gallons of water that were up on the, they were up on a top shelf tucked away. Uh, they were 89 cents a piece there from, yeah, 2010, July of 2014, and they just.
They burst?
No, but they're, there's actually, I can't find a hole, I have, I, I'm using it to water my plants that are in my office, it just, it. It just slows out, it's like the plastic is now permeable, like, it's saying. It's sitting in my recycle bin, because that's the only safe surface I can put it on right now, so.
So.
From the water, it wasn't from the ceiling, we had a small panic attack, after you and I talked, I ran down to go see Scott, oh, let's go see, so, just.
No mold around it.
No mold, no, no wet spots on ceiling, nothing, just really old water, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for letting us know.
Um, well, we come to the part of public comment, speakers are limited to three minutes, this is when you can discuss whatever you want. I think just to, um, keep it in order, the people that are here can be first, yes, and then go to, um, on Zoom. And then if anyone has any correspondence, um, via their emails, so, does anyone here that would like to say anything? And if you do, come to the microphone, you do not have to give your address unless you choose to. At that seat, sir.
Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Try it again. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
It's not important for who I am, but I will let you know who I am, why I'm here, not happy with being here. I'm here to address just one person. Because I don't like my name being thrown around in the city council of the City of Lethar Village, and if you don't know who I am. You should find out and do your homework. My name is Rick Williams. I live on Meadowbook, and, uh, I've been listening and watching Ms. Miller. You've been throwing my name around like I'm belonging to your, your family, and I do not like it. I am a retired union president for road construction. Believe me, I know more about roads than you would ever know. So before you start of throwing my name around, while Meadowwork is being done, do your homework. Keep my name out your mouth.
Thank you. Uh, who is next?
Hi.
Hi.
I, Greg Rubelo, 27641 Lethar Boulevard. As a concerned citizen, I must voice my frustration for a variety of reasons. I'm here to note several facts that I'm concerned with about one of our newest council members and the amount of tax dollars she has cost the city while running for office and since being elected. Ms. Miller's campaign promise was to be financially responsible. Today's truth is nothing but the opposite. During her campaign and since elected, she has cost our city over $100,000 and counting. Here are some of the facts. The city was forced to hire an outside counsel, um, specializing in election law because she challenged the legitimacy of some filings under the 2021 election. This process has cost the city $23,000. The former city administrator resigned from her position due to Ms. Miller's interactions with her. The vacancy forced the city to hire a city administrator search firm. This is costing the city $24,000. The vacant city administrator's role has been divided between three other current employees. This resulted in a temporary increase in paying them. This is costing the city $60,000. Time the city staff has worked to interview vacant positions, all whom have previously stated that she's played a large role in their resignation. In addition to valuable time spent on numerous FOIAs, this process has cost the city an unknown amount of ongoing money. One could argue that Ms. Miller is saving the city money because we have four vacant positions. However, the reality is that tasks are either being picked up by other overworked staff members or getting, or not getting done, and the result, the result, well, result is that the residents are suffering. This contradicts her campaign promise to increase city services. In fact, they're being decreased. In any company, if there's a pattern of four employees leaving an organization as a result of one person, that person would be quickly placed on a performance review plan or even eliminated from the organization. Finally, more taxpayer costs are expected due to legal fees associated with her court filing dated April 15th, Karen Miller versus the City of Lethar Village. A sitting council member, one of our own, our elected official suing the city, she is elected to represent. Please remember, Karen, you represent all of the residents as well as your other fellow city council members, but I want you to succeed, and I want you to be successful. As a resident, I ask you to make the choice to be better and do better. Your campaign promise to be financially responsible starts in your chair. Please stop costing the city thousands of taxpayer dollars in unnecessary expenses.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Scotty, you checking another?
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Amy Mason, Lee Maitinen. Um, I'd like to start by thanking Councilperson Nice for her email last week, uh, in response to repeated requests from me and another member of the Recreation Advisory Committee to hold a meeting. Um, I have emailed her a proposed meeting agenda and I look forward to working together. To support and examine programming that is currently scheduled in the next few months. If we get started right away, we should be able to increase the number of upcoming events to benefit all residents, so thank you. Um, I would also like to request that Councilperson Miller be removed from the position of Southfield Public Schools liaison. I am a parent of a McIntyre Elementary student and a member of the PTO, as well as a resident here in the village. Prior to Councilperson Miller's election, I still remember, there were several projects in progress to improve the relationship between the school district and the city. I expected that the appointment of a liaison to the school district would have helped move these things along, but unfortunately, they seem to have been abandoned. I have been asking Councilperson Miller about the status of these projects and about what other actions she has taken during her almost six months as SPS liaison, as well as her future plans. In response, Councilperson Miller sent me two emails in which she failed to provide any information about anything she has done as SPS liaison. Instead, she insulted me. And slandered both me and others. This is not the behavior I would expect from a government official who was elected to represent me. Especially one who frequently states that she puts residents first, and it gives the impression that only certain residents are worthy of Councilperson Miller's time and respect. In contrast, in the winter, when I emailed Councilperson Cantor about the poorly maintained walkways between the neighborhoods and the schools, he responded immediately and began to research the issue and work on a solution. When I asked Councilperson Miller about the grant that was in progress to improve residents' walk to school, she did not have any information for me. Councilperson Jennings hopefully stepped in to answer my question. I see now that instead of wa, working on improving the relationship between the school and the city and putting all residents first. Councilperson Miller has been busy attempting to halt road improvement work approved by voters in 2020 and by the city council in 2022. I would like to see someone fill the position of Southfield Public Schools liaison, who has the time and motivation to do the position justice and who is willing to listen and work with all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
There's no hand raised, but we did just have a couple individuals join us, so, um, as a reminder for anyone on Zoom, if you would like to add public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. And we'll unmute you and get that going.
No one, uh, no one is raising their hand now, so.
And there's nothing in chat?
I know, so, okay. An earlier message.
Okay, um, and then I had one sent to me from Andrea Bouchard. I'm Andrea Bouchard, and I have been a resident of LV for over 30 years. In the last meeting, there was discussion regarding cleaning up some city properties, specifically doing a clear cut. The island at Willshire was mentioned in this discussion. I was shocked by the suggestion. Our home is directly in front of this island, and it was one of the main reasons we purchased our home. We love the privacy and beautiful scenery. There are also several beautiful mature trees on this property. I would like to see doing a clear cut of any property off the table. And instead of discussion on how we can maintain and preserve these beautiful parts of our city. Thank you for your service to our city. And there's no one else that. No. Okay, then we'll go to mayor and, uh, council comments. Um, I already said we are thinking about the mayor proclamation of maintaining the monarch butterflies and. Pollinators, which I thought that was really good to say. Did you get more information from that?
Yes, I didn't get much.
Oh, you can just, if you haven't sent it to me, I can look at it. It was also, this, um, proclamation was where you could get. The different, uh, flowers that you can put in your own yard to attract the pollinators and, uh, monarchs. And I have a really large place in my backyard now, where there used to be a tree that I might have to think about doing something like that. So, me and my neighbor won't watch each other watch TV, so, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I'm supposed to say, but I don't think so, so. I'll give it to anyone else, anyone else.
I'll go, I just have something real quick. Uh, just wanted to say, uh, Pam, I'm praying that you have a safe and speedy recovery on your, you know, whatever. You have going on, we'll keep that private, but, uh, just, and then, just praying for that, and then also just hoping that we can get that job posting out there. And that we can get the training for the, the payroll this week. And that's all I have, thank you.
If you have anything. Can you give us the update on the proposal that we're gonna be putting out? Just the timeframe and all that? The ballot proposal.
So I did drop a letter to the governor and attorney general, like forwarded to Sue the income last week, um, they're gonna get that out along with the completed resolution. That, uh, and Mia can chime in on this, because she does a lot more use than I, but, uh, typically the turnaround time on that is usually, I guess it's a lot faster than it used to be, but. At least a month, maybe, maybe longer, so that's why August 16th, I believe, is our hard deadline to get it submitted, uh, but I would encourage it to get out sooner rather than later, in the event there are any revisions or. Comments from either of those offices that.
So they do a procedure, and it will go to the attorney general for informal comments, and then if there's anything that needs to be revised, we need that time for it to come back, and so they're really, um, very firm. The governor's office and the attorney general's office with their timeframes, that they do, will not review past certain times, so it's good that this is moving forward.
So we know it's been received, and, and then does it go back to?
No, it's not been sent yet, um, planning on doing that, like, tomorrow, Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
I just have one question for.
Oh, attorneys.
The attorney. For clarification.
And then it comes back to you, and then it'll go back to you guys for revisions if necessary?
Yeah, it'll come back to the city with any comments, uh, or they may reach out to us directly, just one of our other treaties reach out to me, me and directly. Governor or number here.
Yeah. So, because was this resolution already adopted by the council? Okay.
So, and then, and then if there are any comments or changes, requested changes, it'll come back to the county council, and then it will be transferred to, uh, county clerk.
So we did, like, for instance, with our other community, there was something that came back because they're doing it for their primary election, so this is August, they're ahead of the timeframe there. Um, and it, there was something that needed to be, we just found out on Friday or Thursday, and fortuitously, they were having a regularly scheduled meeting this evening, so they could do a new resolution. So, there are certain things that may not just be, we can't just fix them, it'll have to come back to you and adopt another resolution, so.
Okay, thank you. You have anything else? Oh, no, that was, that was mine. Oh, no, that was mine. Good. I just want to say congratulations to Southfield Public Schools and the University High School in Lathir Village. The US News and World Report high school rankings came out and the rankings are based on college readiness, performance on state required tests and graduation rate. And University High School ranked among high schools in the Detroit metro area, they ranked number eight. In high schools in Michigan, they rank number eleven. National magnet schools, they ranked at number ninety. And in national high schools, they are number five hundred seventeen out of eighteen thousand high schools. So they have a ninety-nine percent graduation rate and a lot of good things going on over there. So just want to say congratulations to the University City High School staff and to the school district. And just need to get the word out. I just wanted to reference this maintenance comments. This city council hadn't met with the school board since two thousand nineteen. So I'm not sure what the procedure was with the predecessor, but there had not been a meeting. Mrs. Manten did not share her plans with me and I don't know what she was talking about since I only came on in November. And I'm not exactly sure what she's asking me to do. I have reached out, we had a meeting, I was participated in a focus group. If there are specific grants and programs that she's talking about, please share that information with me, but she has not. So, next thing is breakfast with the bunny. At the last meeting, a financial statement was presented and that needs to be corrected. The expenses were listed as nine hundred and two dollars and eighty-one cents and they were actually eight hundred ten dollars and eighty-nine cents. Instead of deducting my donation, it was added. I also then, after the meeting, I had a reimbursement check that I then returned to the city. So the actual loss on the breakfast with the bunny was three hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, not six hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. And again, I think we did a pretty good job since there wasn't any support with advertising it or getting the word out. So anyway, so I will present that for the record. And then the last thing, a couple of things that were mentioned. I just want to say my complaint filed with the circuit court. This is about everything that I've been doing is about spent, the spending of taxpayer dollars without resident input or oversight. There are a few people making all of the decisions. I've attempted to get information about the infrastructure committee since I expressed concerns about transparency in two thousand and nineteen. So this was not something that was just out of the blue. I filed a FOIA March thirty-first. In that FOIA, I said that I hope that we could work to get this information. I did not want to have to go to circuit court, but it wasn't threatening, but, you know, I put in my FOIA request. I got a quote of four thousand five hundred dollars, which is ridiculous. Redid the, or modified my request, asked for a re-quote, still have not gotten that. So today I went and paid a hundred and twenty-four dollars and two cents, which is only half of it, to gather the information on the infrastructure committee. So again, that was not out of, out of the blue. I have tried multiple ways, multiple, through multiple venues and multiple ways of communicating. So, you know, I think that's something that people need to be aware of. The infrastructure committee made recommendations of over thirty million dollars in expenditures with resident dollars. So that's my concern. That has been my concern. I don't know who the four people are that I'm supposedly responsible for. I absolutely was not responsible for butts along and some of the other glad they have a private conversation with you about some of the details about some of the things that you presented. But thanks for bringing those out and everything isn't always what it appears.
I have a question though. So, and I wasn't going to say anything, so I'm glad that you brought it up. So you're saying that you did not want to go to Third Circuit Court to, you know, bring this all up. But you do understand, you do understand that you are suing yourself and your residents because, let me just finish this. Now you're costing the residents because our city attorney now has to take time to defend a case against a sitting city council person. So that is costing, you understand that it is costing the city? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I, I, I understand, but I've been trying to get that information since two thousand and nineteen.
So no matter what, and the fact that you don't get the information you want, which you can simply probably ask if people are on the committee. Because let me finish, please. Thank you. You don't get the information that you need. So then you go to court and sue the very people that you say you have at the top of the org chart, which you're, again, costing them. And I just, I just want to make sure about that. The other thing is that you're doing a FOIA and I want to ask, how much do you think the citizens should pay for you to get the FOIA? Because it's going to take, you said eight hours or something? Was that eight hours to get?
Eighty-eight hours.
Eighty-eight hours, eighty-eight hours to gather all the information?
Well, they said forty for me.
Okay.
For personnel, because everything I have to make copies of that I have to read that. So it's going to cost us paper. It's going to cost me to read that stuff. I'm the only one that can do it in the city hall because
But my one thing is that it's forty hours out of your job of what you have other things to do. So that's, we're paying somebody to be here to do the treasurer job. We're taking her away from the treasurer's job to gather the paperwork for the FOIA, which is, you're right, absolutely. So how much do you think the residents should pay to get the FOIA together? Because basically the residents is paying her salary, so we're taking her away from her job.
If I could jump in there, that's why with FOIA, the city asks for the anticipated cost, half of that upfront. And when they do, if, if the requister does make that good faith deposit and it turns out to be less time or less than, obviously they won't charge them that full amount. But, but that, that is so that the residents are not just funding these FOIA searches. And it's not, and this is not limited to just Councilwoman Miller. This is standard practice for any, any FOIA that is requesting a large amount.
I mean, I paid for the recording of the meeting that was done in, you know, downstairs. I understand about the payment for it, but I was just asking, what do you think is a, a, a good cost for the residents?
I'm not sure, because when I asked for this on December sixth, I was told I couldn't have it in twenty-four hours, the personnel piece. When I asked for it again in December, I was told that it would be coming. And I was told it had to go through the mayor. Then Pam said at one of the meetings, you could just come in and go through the files. I'll take the stuff out and you can look at them. Then all of a sudden it became forty hours at, you know, sixty-some dollars an hour. So I, I really don't, I really don't know. I thought this was something that was simple. I don't, as someone who has to vote on salaries and giving people additional money and, and paying for additional jobs and when the information that I requested isn't available, and then, you know, these accusations that people left because of me, I mean, just all of these things.
Sticking with the one situation, just sticking with the one situation I asked. I'm just asking, how much do you think?
That's a ridiculous question. I shouldn't have to pay anything.
So no one should pay anything for FOIA?
Saying no one.
But, oh, you, you should just not pay for it.
I shouldn't have to be forced to file a FOIA.
Just asking you this question, Karen, because you did do a FOIA that you should not, although it's in the law about a FOIA, paying for it, you should not have to pay for one. I just want to
I shouldn't have to pay for one. I said I shouldn't have to file a FOIA. I should have gotten the information.
But you did. And so now I'm asking you.
I did not get the information.
But I know, because you did not pay for it. So I'm just asking, I'm really trying to understand. I'm really, really trying to understand that, one, either you shouldn't have to pay for it or what is a good
You're putting words in my mouth. It isn't that I shouldn't have to pay for it. I should have gotten the information that I requested before we were forced to vote on an additional expenditure of almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is what I asked for the, the other pieces. There's oversight issues. There's no checks and balances on some of the other things. I've asked for information since two thousand and nineteen. I have not gotten it. I sent emails to city council in two thousand and twenty. I tried to remove it from a meeting, from the agenda on, at our February meeting. So, you know, if, if everything is so, you know, being done according to the rules, what are the rules? I, I don't see why a committee that recommends thirty million, over thirty million dollars isn't, doesn't have to follow Open Meetings Act rules. Like, that's, that's crazy.
That's stigma. They're not, they're not a deciding body. They're an advisory committee.
Okay.
So city councils, you and the four people sitting to your right are the ones that make that decision.
Okay.
So that, this body is subject to open meetings.
Okay. Well, then I, I, I think the work that's being done in that committee should be done in a different way and subject to open meetings.
So you don't like the response that you've gotten to your questions? And that's why
I haven't gotten a response to my questions. I asked how, what, under what authority?
Ask the same questions over.
Because I, and I have, because I haven't gotten answers.
You haven't gotten answers that you like?
I haven't gotten answers, Scott. I haven't gotten answers.
Because I think we discussed the infrastructure subcommittee repeatedly.
No, well, not to the, you didn't answer the questions that I
Come into existence.
That I laid out there.
Procedure and how they make their recommendations.
Yeah, I've witnessed it. I, I witnessed it. So that's why I have some questions. And they have not been answered. And, yeah.
You're the person that's
No, I do know. No, I, I, I know.
Didn't ask him here.
I'm not asked, no.
Yeah, so I'm just going to make one statement on, on the conversation over there. The, the quote that was just said is that I've tried multiple ways and venues and attempted to get infrastructure information. That's a patent fabrication. I'm sitting right here, three weeks ago at Panera, I told you the same thing. I said, I'm the one that they're going to come to to get that information. I have all that information. Show me an email that you've sent me saying, I want agendas. Show me an email that you said you want meeting notes. I haven't received an email, a request, a phone call, a conversation, nothing. So to sit here and say that, that you've tried all these ways, your, your, your infrastructure FOIA is five, I think it's five typed pages long. All that information, I have. I, I've responded to previous FOIAs on the infrastructure committee. The information was asked for, I gave it to the person. So to sit here and say that you've tried, you know, all these ways to get information, you haven't come to the source, not once.
I was at the December fifteenth meeting and had some questions there and they were not answered. And then there was a secret signing done of a recommendation.
You address that, please, Scott.
No, don't, don't.
No, I am, I mean, he's our city attorney.
Great. I filed a FOIA. I paid for half of it today. I will wait for the information and then we can have a discussion if there are other questions.
It's all political theater. That information is all there and you can pretend like you can't get it so that it
It isn't.
Yes, it is.
You don't have to take minutes because you don't have to follow the Open Meetings Act laws. You, you, you sent out emails to make decisions on a hundred sixty-six thousand dollar project. There aren't votes, you didn't vote in public at that meeting. Okay. You had adjourned the meeting and then you went and got people's signatures. I watched you do it. You didn't vote.
Can you please address us?
There was a discussion, I, I was
Were you there?
I was not present, but there was a discussion at the meeting. A consensus was made amongst the subcommittee members. And my understanding is that council member entered one around and had them sign off on that. So their recommendation based on the way their, their position. And one of those members did not, if I'm correct, one of them refused to sign that.
He wasn't there. That isn't how it happened, but okay.
How did it happen?
I mean, the whole reason why, I would like to
Recommending body had a secret vote that somehow changed the vote of the city council. That's, that's something I'd like to know, how that happened.
Well, he adjourned the meeting and then people came and signed it.
We adjourned meetings here all the time.
Discuss what they were recommending.
Not really. There were people that were, were giving, that had concerns about the whole program and
People, who were the people? The committee member, the voting committee members?
Residents who were talking
And you were heard at that meeting, allowed to participate at that meeting as if you were a board member until you got disrupted.
Okay.
Yeah. And at the end of the meeting, I walked around, I said to every single committee member, I said, is, we had a draft recommendation. Asked each person if they agreed to it. They all said yes. We asked Michael Griffin to email his response because he was not at the meeting. He said no. For who said yes, signed the document.
Right. I think he had asked you to do a Zoom meeting and you wouldn't do it for him. But anyway. And then I came up to you and said, did you just have the, the committee members sign this in secret? And you said yes. And I said, what about the Open Meetings Act?
I said, the Open Meetings Act doesn't apply.
Right. We're not an elected body. We don't have to follow those rules, right?
Exactly right.
Well, again, thirty million dollars of expenditures.
The infrastructure
Twenty percent increase in our water bills.
The infrastructure committee can only do a recommendation to the council. The council is the one that made the decision, just to make that
Of the, of the eleven million dollars that has been spent, five point three million dollars were approved by the voters, not by the council, not by the infrastructure committee. Five point eight million dollars were approved by the council, not by the infrastructure committee. The infrastructure committee is an advisory body that makes a recommendation. This is the body that has the responsibility for allocating and appropriating those dollars, not the infrastructure committee.
Can I ask a question? That's my curiosity. Because I wasn't around when you started the committee. How did it, what, what started it? Or why did we decide we needed one? And what was, what was the impetus for starting it?
Same, 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 same reason as the cannabis, just to have a, a body to do research and advise the council.
And was it Cannabis and this infrastructure and it was to liaison portion of
And were all of these, like, applications that, like, people, and who, who selected committee members and stuff?
As in all, all committees, the mayor makes the recommendation, the council approves.
And how long do the committees last? Because it looks, I mean, we don't need a marijuana study group anymore, obviously. So that just, they just dissolve?
Just kind of dissolve, I think.
Typically, yeah. It's a year is typical. Under the charter, we don't have standing committees. Some, some communities, in fact, that's why I was turning tonight, another community, they have a consultant review committee that I had a meeting with prior to. So that's a standing committee. But in Lakeville Village, we don't have any standing committees. They're, they're appointed on a as-needed basis. So the road infrastructure has been a problem in the city for years. I mean, the deterioration of our roads is no surprise to anybody here, nor anybody listening. One of the biggest complaints that I think we received was flooding sidewalks, ditches backing up. So city council took the initiative and, and Bruce, one of the statistics, but previously, I think we were paving something about a half mile road a year. How much? Okay, so, yeah, three tenths of a mile a year. I mean, at that rate, the city's roads would not get paved for
Sixty-three or
Sixty-three. So based on that problem, council made the decision to, instead of council doing all the hours of the work of meeting with the engineer and having just countless meetings, they recommended that the subcommittee do the heavy lifting of the, of the project and then make a recommendation to city council. And, and that's exactly what happened with the cannabis issue when cannabis was legalized. And it was, again, recommended that another body do research, another group of individuals do the research for the council and then make a recommendation to councils to what their findings were. And again, for that, things that we were looking for were impacts on crime in other communities. Financial, we didn't want to be the first community to open up a cannabis facility. We wanted to see how other communities were handling it and the impacts it was having in their communities before our community made a decision on how to proceed with that. So, so those were the two probably largest ones that were created. Trying to think of the past, but I know we, we've used some committees before for certain things. Planning Commission uses them for the capital improvement plan.
And then how, how are they advertised? Like, like we're talking about maybe doing the parks. Would that be a subcommittee?
If council wanted to task the subcommittee with, council has the ability to create a subcommittee for pretty much anything they want. If they want a body of not only residents, but council members to have input on it, on an issue or investigate an issue more thoroughly, they can appoint a subcommittee to do that. In some communities, they have hundreds of subcommittees that, that handle all of their day-to-day and that they're presenting
Projects.
Just reports to the council for, and then the council is, is the policymaking body and the action body. And then the, the city staff is who's responsible for implementing and executing that policy. So that's kind of how the big picture process works. And we, again, we haven't utilized some committees all that often in my tenure here with the city. Pam probably would know more if we have, but that's all I can think of off the top of my head. It's cannabis, infrastructure. My tenure here with the city, Pam probably would know more if we have, but that's all I can think of off the top of my head. It's cannabis, infrastructure. And then or X or CIP for planning commission and then we did uh building material.
And even CIP, even the capital improvements plan and the building materials study group, those are both very specific to planning commission. Those don't have outside.
And you do have people on those right now? Or you those are groups you're trying to get?
Oh, those are planning commissioners on buildings, materials study group.
Oh, yeah.
And and the capital improvements plan. Those are only, those are only planning commissioners.
And what are terms for most of these?
Planning commissioners are four-year terms. Four-year terms.
What about like the other ones? Are they usually a year?
The subcommittees are generally a year and they're generally reappointed at the beginning of every year. I think that's what we've done historically. And again, you don't utilize them all that often. But.
No, but we have a huge talent pool in the community and it's be nice to, if like we want to do a project, we can tap into them if we knew that that. I didn't know that was available.
Yeah.
Request volunteers. And sometimes it's a lot harder to get them than than you would think, but.
To answer your question.
Three years. Pardon me. Infrastructure has been three years. I mean, there you go to this website, the city website, and there are applications for all the other things, but there isn't an application for infrastructure. So just wondering what's.
So so what I what I started to say um or interrupted was um typically um you know, we advertise these in all the regular ways, on the website, Facebook and so forth. So for example, initially for the infrastructure committee, I think we had five applicants for four positions. One applicant had requested, um can't remember what the other committee or subcommittee or volunteer organization within the city they wanted to. They put they put two infrastructure and one other one. So we did put them on whatever the other committee was and took the other four. Specifically, they're advertised via the.
And who decides how many are on the committee?
Council, yeah, it's council. You just you can't have a quorum of city council on a subcommittee. That's why, you know, and I believe there's only two council members on. There were only two on the cannabis thing. There's only two on.
One on one on the committee and then one serving as a secondary advisor.
But only two, two council people should be a part of that.
But because they only, like some have six, like the recreation I that that keeps, I've seen up to nine. That seems like a lot. I don't know, maybe. Yours had, what does infrastructure have? Five? I don't. So that's determined. There's no limit?
There's no definitive limit or minimum. I mean, obviously, you would want to have enough that you could have a open discussion and have some good ideas, but a lot of the times, limiting factors, how many individuals are interested in actually serving.
And then that one application that's online covers all of these subcommittees.
I believe that I. I think it is. Yeah, there's there's one application and it's got a bunch of checkboxes for what you're interested in.
So um just to get back to what I was saying, I still would like to know, Councilwoman Miller, how much money do you think? Or yes, how much money or what do you think the fair way to get your FOIA taken care of? But we're removing someone from their daily position or their daily work.
I already gave you an example of how it went from come on in and check out the files.
That's not what I'm asking.
Hours at Kelly.
Listen.
I'm sorry, your 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 question isn't even.
No, the question is really good. No, it's really relevant because I would like for us to move forward um at some point and not have to go through all this. And the fact is that Mr. Rubelo brought up a really good point that made me start thinking about it is that there's a lot of money that's going on that's towards some things that you're trying to get done. And my question is, so we can get this corrected, how much either A, how much do you think you should be charged for forty hours worth of documentation for your FOIA? That's the first question. A or B, you should not be charged at all just because you shouldn't be charged at all.
I.
I'm asking.
Okay, well, I'm answering. If we're filing a FOIA.
If you're filing.
You pay for it, yes, but I should not have had to file a FOIA.
But that's not the point you did. So I'm asking. No, you did though.
The point. It was a point of desperation.
Okay, so now you're desperate. And so you got a FOIA. And so now I'm asking you that you should pay for, but I'm just asking, what do you think the price is? How much do the residents have to pay for the FOIA that, and I get what you're saying, that you you asked for it before. I got it that you got to the desperate situation. But we get, they gave you how much it's going to be, the forty hours to do it. And I'm just really asking for not.
Hours and and again, there are.
The total was not just the one FOIA. It was five FOIAs altogether. That's what the.
And how much have residents paid for the forty percent water loss that has been going on since two thousand sixteen seventeen?
Let's try to stick to one.
How much have residents paid for all of?
Councilwoman Miller, let's stick to one situation at a time because I'm really trying to get an understanding of the FOIA part of how much you should be charged. Because if you say you shouldn't be charged, I mean, that you're giving me an answer. I just would like to know, what do you think the fair amount is? Because I just, I would like for us to never talk about FOIAs again in your situation. I mean, I would like to get it resolved, to be quite truthful.
Which should have been resolved a long time ago, so.
But it wasn't. It's someone who are here right now.
I'm sorry, but it doesn't seem like there's an answer. So I think we should adjourn the meeting and let's go. I'm so sorry, but let's, please, we're not gonna get an answer, so.
So he didn't do it. So he didn't. Did you do most?
No, but go. The one the one other comment that I have based upon the conversation earlier. Elaine Mantine made um council comments and then Karen responded as if, you know, Elaine had not asked her any valid questions whatsoever. Which, again, was not true. I could read the email if you'd like. Um she sent it to me before the meeting.
And I see.
Yeah, and and there were specific questions that were asked. In fact, did I read it?
No, don't read them.
Yeah, I mean, I have to read it, but the.
Is is she asked five or six specific questions. None of them were addressed. The response that she received was rude. And then she followed up and said that she felt that she was treated rudely, asked the questions again, and then would received another rude response. She never got any answers to her questions. So regardless of what happened in the past, where she likes to focus, moving on in the future to try to get those questions answered and resolved and figure out what the the plan was from the SPS liaison. All she got was a rude response.
I'm sorry, I haven't had any information given to me. Ask Ian what he did. I don't I don't know. I don't know what programs and what grants you were talking about.
For um Southfield Public Schools. And she did CC me on that email also. It's just, you know, I one thing is that I'm noticing, and I'm just being very transparent, is that as soon as we come out of this meeting, as soon as we get off of camera, we get a barrage of emails, a barrage of things that most of the residents don't see. And I'm bringing it, I'm bringing it to light here because let's re, let's let's resolve it here. Let's let's be transparent for everyone.
When is the last time you got an email?
Elaine, I just got the email from you. Actually, yes, from you because you CC me on it. Um and the example that um Mayor Pro Tim was talking about. Elaine, she listed questions to you about being a Southfield Public School liaison. She listed questions to you. The email that was returned was horrific to a a uh resident. It was. And then the next email when she responded was again, questions, specific questions about the Southfield Public Schools. Then your response included me in it and you disparaged me in that email again, and I had nothing to do with it.
Disparage you?
Here in the email saying that I.
My question is about the progress you have made in the last five months as an elected official and the plans you are making as liaison to Southfield Public Schools to improve the relationship between the school district and the city of Lathir Village. I'm specifically concerned with the lack of marketing to residents and the poor quality and lack of maintenance of pathways between the schools and our neighbors. I'm also wondering if you plan to continue or expand on having SPS representatives attend LV events and on creating a partnership between SPS and LV Parks and Recreation.
And which of those questions did you answer?
What's your?
I what are the? I didn't respond to this.
Then I'll I'll read the response.
Well, I said to ask the mayor because I was just came on to.
Productive. And and I tend to agree with Councilmember Jennings that this is a conversation that needs to be had. It it needs to be had in some sort of an organized fashion. And and that's, and I I've mentioned this before. I mean, this is where we we discuss. This is where we decide these things. But let's have some structure to it. So Councilmember Miller, if you have certain things you want to discuss as a council, you you want personnel records, you want to know about job descriptions. I encourage you to make a list of the things that you want city council to discuss. If there's documents that are relevant in those discussions that can be procured from city staff and and be put on as part of an agenda, an agenda, then let's have those discussions. I would also ask that it be kept somewhat relevant because you're not going to be able to go back and undo something that happened. I I mean, with with the election stuff, I mean, that that is water under the bridge. I don't see how anything is going to change. And and again, I under, from my perspective, all that information has already been provided to you. But if there's a list of things that are uh things that are bothering you that you want to discuss and you want council to discuss, please send them to send them to me. And I and I'll see that it gets put on an agenda and then we discuss it because this festering picking residents to come in and speak on your behalf and then other residents.
Anyone to come in and speak on my behalf. I'm sorry, and I that was not engineered. I had nothing to do with that.
Because that was pretty obvious that that was.
The what?
When everyone came in with the note cards.
That that was really.
But I would rather be productive and let's get to the business of putting the residents first and solving some of the issues because there are, believe it or not, a lot of big issues that are still lurking out in the city that we haven't even begun to touch on. We're still worried about subcommittees. We're worried about other things that really aren't that important to the residents.
That's not, that's not.
But we'll continue to do. That's fine.
And again, that's that was my push behind trying to get the suffix ordinance taken care of. Is it would address all this?
No, it wouldn't because there are ethical questions on some of the things that I've asked. So it it.
Again, such as, please identify what.
I did. I guess I put in five pages.
This is the, and this is the reason why I brought these things up, just because I know um as soon as we walk out of this meeting, as soon as we walk out, we have a barrage of emails.
I know, but this is.
And the thing about it, this is it's supposed to be our study session where we never get an opportunity to talk. And if there is something that we can discuss and resolve, I would love to resolve it because we talk about the same exact thing every single meeting. And then we get some new business in there. And so it is, and I agree with you in that, write down all the issues, but when I I just want to know when we'll stop.
Because people keep bringing it up.
Just you, just you.
Me.
Does you bring?
Came and spoke this evening about me. Every meeting, Mr. Cantor has something that he's reading, an email, all of these things. It it keeps it going. I just respond. That's all.
They come from some. These emails don't just populate in his inbox.
What comes from somewhere?
These these emails that he keeps reading. I mean, there's, these are, these are the same four or five issues that are disguised as something different. It's it's very clear that there's some personality conflicts on this.
Has nothing to do with personality.
It does.
It's about fiscal responsibility.
So I'm gonna ask you, if you have an issue, please identify what what is it that you're trying to solve or what is it that you're trying to investigate? And then let's get the information and then let's have a a constructive, controlled discussion about it amongst council. And if there's action to be taken, let's take it. But if not, let's put it behind us and move forward. There are bigger things in this city that need to be addressed. I mean, there's, the city is going through litigation. There's commercial property issues. There's unsold property that we still need to address. I mean, there's a lot of things. There's cannabis looming on the ballot. And there's a lot of things that that the city could be doing. There's a lot of vacancies in staff that that could be filled. There's a lot of things that that are not being addressed. And and like the mayor said, we we talked about the same six things over and over again, and maybe get a little bit of new business in there. I mean, we're we're in a position now where we're expecting a budget to be prepared in two weeks. How many budget meetings has the city council conducted and held?
Oh, and that's my fault. That's on me.
Well, we certainly are spending a lot of time talking about FOIA requests and Southfield Public Schools. I mean, we're spending time talking about silly things when this is what we should, this is what council should be doing. They should be prioritizing identifying areas to spend money and and assisting with preparation of the budget.
It wasn't on our agenda.
Yeah, it hasn't been on.
There's there were multiple requests for budget study sessions.
And the doodle polls.
That were sent out, no responses. That's on this council for not for not scheduling that.
But she sent out a doodle poll asking everyone to respond to that. So we had a specific date that we can all come to. It's been.
For ethics or for?
It was a doodle poll on this one.
Normally, the budgets workshops start in February.
I didn't get one for.
Last week, asking everybody to please respond with dates. It was the first ask was for dates so we can do the ethics ordinance. And then I indicated that I would be pulling from those from the agreed-upon dates to set budget meetings.
Well, even before that, in March, there was.
Yes, there was one and it's Mondays and I added some Tuesdays and two. And the doodle poll was on the agenda packet that came out in the emails.
From my perspective, that and again, I'm not on this body, but from my perspective, that would be where I would be focusing instead of these other matters.
If if everything was in great condition and I thought everything was running how it should be, what would have been the point to come on city council? Just to come on and be a yes person to everything that's going on and not ask questions?
I didn't get answers to his questions. These are not questions that are relevant right now. You're asking for something that we that the past is the past. I mean, the fact is, get some clarification, I understand. But the fact is, is that we all came on council to make our our city better uh and to move it forward. But it seems like we've stalled in that um that we haven't been able to uh move it forward because, again, we've been stuck on the FOIAs, the the Southfield Public School situation, uh the elections, the the fact is that we don't have enough.
I mean, it started out because we didn't have an organizational meeting for the appropriate amount of time. That was the first issue. And then it it transitioned to the administrator not responding quick enough. And then the administrator resigned.
Oh, oh, because there wasn't anything prior to that, right? That hadn't been addressed, right?
Your personal conflict with the administrator?
My personal con, okay.
Well, you're in the administrator's personal conflict. I mean, how how else should we address it? You swap cease and desist letters with your own private attorneys. I I don't.
I didn't. I didn't send her a cease and desist letter. I didn't do that.
So I I I'm again, I'm curious, what are the issues you like? What are some of the big problems that you feel that are going on? Because everything else has just been creating more problems from my perspective.
I was asking about the infrastructure committee. I was asking about the forty percent water loss that has gone on for so long and what what's been done, what, you know, what process as far as the infrastructure. I wanted to know what power the city council had to create a committee that's run by the mayor pro temp and uh as I said, recommending huge amounts of of expenditures.
So we address those, how the committee was created tonight?
Please, I put in my list. I paid today for half of the infrastructure. Please provide the infrastructure information. And then we will go from there. You have you have all you have all five of them. It keeps getting delayed and I.
Well, I think there was a request to respond from FOIA and then you didn't respond to that. You can't just.
There was a request to what?
There was, you submitted a FOIA request. There was a uh anticipated fee that was sent to you, which you did not respond to. So city council.
As it was forty-five hundred dollars.
Fulfill a FOIA request if they if they've asked for a deposit and the deposit hasn't been paid. So if you if you withdrawn that and submitted a revised FOIA, then that needs to be done so that the city can respond to that accordingly.
I I did. I modified it and then I and then I asked Kelda about the follow-up on it and she said I had to redo them. So I redid them and asked for a re-quote because it was less time. I didn't ask for copies to be made and that kind of thing. And I didn't get a a re-quote. Um I didn't get the information. And so I reached out to the circuit court and I came today and paid for half of the infrastructure request, so.
Okay, I still don't know how anything that you're gonna get is gonna be different than the answer that we gave you this evening on how the committees are formed.
Does that satisfy then? Once that is? That is.
That is.
Well, no, I, I have.
Satisfy that outstanding issues that you had then or are there additions?
I have, I have five FOIAs that I filed, so I'll reevaluate. Plus forty-five hundred dollars is a lot of, a lot of money and it just seems as if it's a deterrent, but.
Well, again, if there's an issue that you think council should discuss, I'd recommend putting it on quest, send it to me, we'll put it on an agenda. If there's documentation that the city has in support of that discussion item, it can be provided without a FOIA request because it'll be something that council discusses. I know we brought, I brought this up before, if there's an issue that you feel needs to be investigated, then this is the venue, this is the place that it's done at.
But you don't ask the people who are doing it to be the investigators, that doesn't make sense.
Well, I know you've already contacted the state police and they've declined to investigate any of your allegations, so I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry, that was, that was something that was given to me, I did not reach out, so.
So the detective was lying, that makes sense.
I have other things, um. Suzie, I know Jalen and I were able to secure fifty bike safety kits.
Yes.
Some cog and we haven't heard that been addressed, so you want to say something about that or?
I've got them in my office, I gotta put, I want to put them together in some sort of organization and put them out there on in the emails that are on Facebook and the website, same thing we have, we have bike lights, they're awesome, I have some of my own from something else and they're, they're, they're quite wonderful. Right, like you're not going to miss anybody, so I do want to, I just want to get them out. I just haven't had time to sort through them, but they will be available for residents, I was trying to think of a good way to, to. Put a diverse array, there's, like there's ones that are reflective, ones that you can put on your arm, there's like little keychain ones, there's a whole bunch of different. There's a whole bunch of lights and flashers and so I just want to put them together, but.
I'm just curious if there's, Scott, if there was any, if we're, you're able to follow up at all on, on Mr. Nordmo's request about the, kind of the mesh pattern on the service drive over by eleven and.
He, he sent me another email back for, I have not reached back out.
And have we, have we followed up with American Tower and Tower Point to let them know what we decided? Because I know I've gotten a couple of calls from Tower Point, I haven't, I haven't responded to any of them, but I.
That email is probably stuck in my dress, so I'll get that, I'll get that.
Okay, that way they'll stop calling me. And then I guess question for you, because I, I just couldn't, I know, you know, it sounds like you and Elaine have talked a little bit, but I.
I, I've had a couple RAC members reach out, I want to know what next meeting was going to be, so it sounds like you guys are talking, if you guys try to schedule a date or anything.
Well, if I ask, we should still have vacation, they need to be in it. Suzanne, she, the newer.
We don't need to be in it, I, I think I told you in my email a couple of weeks ago.
That was her request.
Okay, okay.
So that's what I told her, I knew you were going, I wasn't sure the dates, but I said we'll work around that.
Okay.
And I'm sure, and she's, you're training her, that's probably not a good week to do it this week.
Probably not.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll talk about.
Okay, fine.
I don't really have a, and we need to get that list together, because she gave me names that I didn't see on the lists I got from everybody else.
Okay.
So I want to make sure I have the right list. She had Jalen on it, Jalen, do you know you're on the Recreation Committee?
Yep.
Oh.
Oh, I kind of forgot, but I, I have a few committees I forgot, sorry.
Yeah, and then just the last thing, just from walking around the city the last three or four, or actually the last two weeks, it's great to see. There's got tons of construction going on, the roads are being worked on, the storm sewers are being cleaned, the fire hydrants are being replaced and, and the sidewalks are being replaced. Today I walked down Southfield Road for the first time without having to walk like this staring down, don't worry about tripping. Yeah, so it's, it's good to see we're making progress and that's, you know, tax dollars at work and, you know, it's, it's going to be a hectic summer of construction, but when we're done, it's going to be, and we're going to be much improved and continue to improve as we go into year three, so.
Anything else? All right, well.
Motion to adjourn.
Remove the second, have a good evening, everyone.